I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the auditorium, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for individual reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we stand for Sandra Hope, a business teacher at the high school from nineteen seventy-four through two thousand and ten, who passed away on October seventeenth. And for William McCray, who's the father-in-law of board member Mike Sage and was also a twenty-year veteran of the Navy, who passed away on October twenty-fifth. Thank you, everyone. Four point oh presentations this evening. We have one, the allergy presentation by Mrs. Ziegler. And Board of Education, if we could seat ourselves in the front row. It would be projected. Mrs. Ziegler?
Policy seventy-five twenty-one is the Students with Life-Threatening Allergies policy that was approved by the Board of Education in February of two thousand and sixteen. And part of that policy, as part of the policy, we are illustrating to you what the regulations are. And by regulations, what we mean is how is that policy going to be implemented into the buildings within our district to make sure that it's following along the lines of what the policy is set out to do. I know that this is also part of the Board of Education's goals, to make sure that we are consistent across the buildings in what we are doing and making sure that we are creating, creating, excuse me, an environment where all of our students are safe. So again, February eighth, two thousand and sixteen, you as the Board of Education approved their policy. A committee was put together with representation from across the district, and I will introduce you to those people in just a minute. But we were put together with the charge of developing the regulations of how their policy would be implemented in the buildings and to create consistency with the procedures that were being implemented in the buildings. We have some of our committee members here. And one of the wonderful things in the list that you see here is that we had cross-representation from all grade levels within the district. I want to say a special thank you to those administrators who are here with us this evening. Carrie Green, who's a principal from Johnny Sholley. We have Greg Hare, who is our assistant principal at William Street School. We have Peter Krasinski, who is our principal here at the middle school. Dr. Perrini and Judy Willannon, who is our lead nurse, who is out of Court Street. We also had on the committee Jackie Bowe, who's the principal at William Street School. Jenny Davis, who couldn't be here with us this evening, along with myself.
And tonight, we stand for Sandra Hope, a business teacher at the high school from nineteen seventy-four through two thousand and ten, who passed away on October seventeenth. And for William McCray, who's the father-in-law of board member Mike Sage and was also a twenty-year veteran of the Navy, who passed away on October twenty-fifth.
Who have students with life-threatening allergies from across the district. And we had the opportunity to bring those parents in, to review what it is that is set forth in our policy and to really ask us to really, to really work with them and for us to ask them, rather, what else can we do
Four point oh presentations this evening. We have one, the allergy presentation by Mrs. Ziegler. And Board of Education, if we could seat ourselves in the front row. It would be projected. Mrs. Ziegler?
One of the things that we put into place in the regulations this year was that at the beginning of each school year, all staff are now required to meet with the building nurse within their building to review any student medical conditions. In the past, it may have just been teachers who had students in their classes. However, this year, we have asked for all teachers to go down and meet to at least Policy seventy-five twenty-one is the Students with Life-Threatening Allergies policy that was approved by the Board of Education in February of two thousand and sixteen. And part of that policy shows signs or symptoms of anaphylaxis. As part of the policy, all faculty and staff are required to view the GCM training annually that was also put into effect this year. And by regulations, what we mean is how is that policy going to be implemented into the buildings within our district to make sure that it's following along the lines of what the policy is set out to do. I know that this is also part of the Board of Education's goals so that everybody was at least familiar with how the auto-injectors work, what signs or symptoms were. And although they're not expected to provide the administration, if they don't feel comfortable, they at least became more familiar. You as the Board of Education approved their policy. A committee was put together with representation from across the district, and I will introduce you to those people in just a minute. But we were put together with the charge of developing the regulations of how their policy would be implemented in the buildings and to create consistency with the procedures that were being implemented in the buildings. From different buildings throughout the district. And we consolidated them into one letter that is standard across the district that goes out to the parents of all students in a classroom. I want to say a special thank you to those administrators who are here with us this evening. And we have Carrie Green, who's our principal, Johnny Sholley. But to let them know there may be a student in their classroom. We have Greg Hare, who is our assistant principal at William Street School. We also have Peter Krasinski, who is our principal here at the middle school. Dr. Perrini and Judy Willannon, who is our lead nurse, who is out of Court Street. We also had on the the committee Jackie Bowe, who's the principal at William Street School. Jenny Davis, who couldn't be here with us this evening, along with myself. Their allergy information is entered into NutraKids. But in addition to these people on the committee, one of the other things that we had the opportunity to do. We provide the appropriate chemicals used to clean the tables and the chairs. And just to aside, one of the things we got from We had an opportunity to speak with some of the parents who have students with life-threatening allergies from across the district. And we had the opportunity to bring those parents in, to review what it is that is set forth in our policy and to really ask us to really, to really work with them and for us to ask them, rather, what else can we do to, one, make sure that we're addressing the issues that need to be addressed but making sure that you feel your child is safe in the environments where they are at risk. Providing an emergency care plan with the student picture if necessary. Enforcing no eating on the bus if that was appropriate. And if eating does occur, to make sure that the seats are wiped down. One of the things that we put into place in the regulations this year was that at the beginning of each school year, all staff are now required to meet with the building nurse within their building to review any student medical conditions. In the past, it may have just been teachers who had students in their classes. However, this year, we have asked for all teachers to go down and meet to at least become familiar with the signs and symptoms of a student who may go into showing signs or symptoms of anaphylaxis. And when the sub-accepts a job in ASAP, it notifies them that there are health concerns in that classroom. It shows them this posting. And that needed to be done by all faculty members by September fifteenth. Our building nurses also presented at faculty meetings on opening day regarding allergies and reviewing the epinephrine auto-injector administration so that everybody was at least familiar with how the auto-injectors work, what signs or symptoms were. And although they're not expected to provide the administration, if they don't feel comfortable, they at least became more familiar with how that worked. Finalize those regulations. This is ready to be posted on the district website. In addition, and one of the goals of the regulations is to maintain consistency across all buildings for preventing allergy, allergen exposures. Classroom food policies, a number of different letters from different buildings throughout the district. And we consolidated those into one letter that is standard across the district that goes out to the parents of all students in a classroom, making sure that they're aware of a student within the classroom that may have an allergy. And not necessarily, we want to maintain the confidentiality of that student, but to let them know that there may be a student in that classroom. We also have maintained or updated cafeteria and mealtime policies so that we work with cafeteria staff, not only in the serving portion of the cafeteria, but also in the area where the students eat. Determine whether the child will bring their lunch or whether they will be able to eat in the cafeteria. Their information is entered, their allergy information is entered into NutraKids. We provide the appropriate chemicals used to clean the tables and the chairs. And just to aside, one of the things we got from some of the parents that we met with over the summer were not only making sure that the tables are clean, but making sure that the chairs that go with those tables are dedicated to those tables and that those are launched. So it's important that we don't have any cross-contamination for those tables and that we make sure we've got some sort of identification to make sure that those are being cleaned and monitored equally. We also work with our transportation department.
I do.
And again, reviewing and making sure that we were consistent with all policies as far as assigned seats, if those were appropriate. Providing an emergency care plan with the student picture if necessary. Enforcing no eating on the bus if that was appropriate. And if eating does occur, to make sure that the seats are wiped down.
I attended the law conference on Thursday. It was an all-day conference.
In addition, what we did as a district is we required all substitute teachers to take the GCM training by September fifteenth.
Topics were very informative, relevant.
And any new hires that are hired later than the month of September are required to do the training within thirty days of their hiring date. What we've also done is we've put an alert in the system. We've collected the information for each of our buildings from each of our buildings within the district of the classrooms that have students with
Dr. Valley, if I'm stealing your thunder, I apologize. I won't go into great detail. But we did, two of our groups did present. And one of them was the journey to Google. They did an outstanding job presenting on the technology here in the district. And one of the things I thought was awesome about that was that these positions, these two teachers got, took these roles on without job descriptions. And I didn't know that until I went to this, until I heard them speak. And basically, we're told to create their own job description based on the needs of the district. And I thought that was awesome because they were able to discover what they needed and put it in place. So teachers working with IT, it turned out to be a great combination. And what they did together was awesome. Very excited. They were very excited about what they do. And it was just really great to see. Awesome job. Then the middle school, high school did a leadership presentation. They were great. I apologize, I don't know the two students' names that were presenting. I tried to look that up, but I couldn't find it anywhere. One of them is a current student, the other is an alum. They were awesome, very well-spoken. The gentleman, he was a two thousand and twelve, was it, graduate of Lancaster? Great job.
Adam Milton.
What was his name?
Adam Milton, yeah. He was the student union president in two thousand and twelve.
He was phenomenal. He was so well-poised and so well-spoken. Did such a great job. It was really neat to see. And the list of service projects and community projects that the high school, middle school did was very impressive. Awesome to see them. I attended one on advocacy, like who is who in legislation. That was pretty informative for me and the role I play here on the board. I also attended, along with Dr. Valley and Pat, I don't want to take from you either, but we attended the public, the state of public education. The commissioner couldn't make it, so we had a substitute, who I thought was very energetic, but his message was definitely delivered to the wrong crowd, I thought. I don't know if you gentlemen would agree with me. But while his message was entertaining, I don't know how I felt about exactly what he had to say. I also attended what's new in special education. I don't think anything was really new. Is Mr. Armstrong here? It was nothing really new, John, so I think you kind of knew everything. I also attended another one on strengthening education in the middle school. And I've passed on some information to Dr. Valley. When he gets a chance to look at it, we can discuss that more in more detail. But there's some really good programs, a pretty good program that I'd like to see our middle school get involved in. But I'm going to let him take a look at it first and see if he agrees. That's it as far as the convention, kind of. My liaison part of it talks about the business meeting, but I don't want to take that from you, Sue, because you attended the business meeting. Are you going to discuss the business meeting?
I could.
Okay, because I'll let you do that. And if need be, I can pick up. But that's kind of what the liaison part was. I just have a couple more things. I just want to congratulate and give a shout-out, I have to, to Mrs. Tracy Amy, who happens to be my sister and her class at Como Park for a job well-done with her kindergarteners. They were featured on several news channels for their role in collecting Halloween candy for our military personnel and sending it over to our active military. They filled eighteen boxes. And they'll be sending it over with a book that they created, a thank-you book in each one of those. So that's being sent out to some of our alums here from Lancaster, which I thought was awesome. And if you saw it on the news, those kids were fantastic. And lastly, another shout-out to our varsity football team. How can you not be proud of that team for an undefeated season so far? So congrats to them. One last thing to the board. If you haven't gotten it already, it is online, but you probably will get it in the mail. The onboard publication that we get in the mail, there is a convention review if you didn't get to go to the convention, or even if you did. It's an awesome review of the different presentations that went on. I take a look at it, gives a good overview of what happened there. So I found many of the articles pretty interesting. That's it for me. And Sue, if you want to do the liaison thing, I can pick up.
Okay.
Yes, I did attend the business meeting for the voting delegate. Wasn't exactly sure what to expect. It was my first year, obviously. Basically, we had forty-seven pages of policy. There was a policy group that went over, kind of talked about whether they would propose that we accept it or not. It flew right along. I tried to keep up the best that I could. But it was very interesting, informative. Tons of good stuff that they talked about. And also, like Brenda said, if you did get this, it is all in here. It's a very good overview also of the annual business meeting, overview on that, some of the stuff that they talked about in that. I didn't get to see any of the convention speakers. I really wish I would have, but I got
Yeah.
The, at the business meeting, they did adopt fourteen new positions. So some of them were pretty good. Some of them, we don't really affect Lancaster too much, but some of them were pretty It would be interesting to see what happens once they're proposed. And this was supporting fourteen new positions.
Okay, anyone else on the board?
I do, Pat. I also attended the conference, the convention and expo. And Brenda mentioned a lot of the speakers. But I just want to say there's just not enough time in a couple of days to hit all the stuff that you want to learn. There's so many wonderful workshops. Advocacy one oh one, I also attended that. It's really great to know who to go to to advocate for your students, your community. So that was very helpful. Special education, which of course I take an interest in. My daughter's in special education. That was great to learn what's going on there. Lancaster leadership presentation was fabulous. The girl's name was Devon Delaney, I believe, and she was excellent as well. They all did a great job. A really cool workshop that I did, that I just want to highlight, was called Creativity in a Common Core Era. And it highlighted the arts and the music portion. We're really blessed here at Lancaster to have wonderful music programs and the arts and the theater, which I happen to love. And it was really cool to hear a professor from Syracuse and also his wife, who's a teacher at, I believe it's West Hill, so it's out there. But just to find your passion, it also transfers to everything else that you do at school. And just, not everyone fits that mold of learning in the same way. So to, you know, have that escape to something you really love and you can learn so many different aspects of, it all kind of comes together. It was really an interesting workshop. What didn't she talk about? Let's see here. Also, got to look at the expo floor, which was pretty cool. They had a three-D technology in the classroom booth. And it's not fully developed, but it was a lot in the anatomy and the biology field, which was really cool. You put the goggles on and they show you like these body parts. And really interesting. And it's definitely coming, you know, coming. That's the wave of technology. And also, I know Brenda was with me this day. We spotted these dry erase tables. And I just think like everyone in the school should have one. They're so cool. You can just draw on the top of them. And I'm an artist, so I love the fact that you can draw on them, get ideas. You can just like think out loud, basically. And, you know, you could do anything on them. They're really cool. They had standing desks, which are also, you know, coming down. They had outdoor products. Really, really great convention and expo. Got to network with a lot of people from other districts and administrators. It was really a good time. And again, maybe we could just like double the time, because two days is just not enough. But that's what I have.
Last Thursday, I attended the insurance meeting. The insurance meeting is in regards to all the staff members for the Lancaster School District. And we went over quite a few things in regards to, we're self-funded. And when we first went into being self-funded, we set up a reserve. And we have used some monies in the reserves to maintain the premiums for the Lancaster School District, to make sure that the premiums are fair for all our employees. We also talked about generic drugs versus brand drugs and how they, how generic drugs, brand drugs finally become generic drugs and then brand drugs come back. And we talked about, in regards to generic drugs, you know, if staff members can get a drug that is generic, it's less cost towards the district. So a lot of the union members went back to their staff to talk about, you know, if possible, to take generic drugs. We also talked about upcoming, different things that are going to happen in regards to insurance. We talked about, you know, going to the emergency room versus going to immediate healthcare versus going to your own physician. Because depending on what avenue you go with, can cost the district more money. And I have to say, over the last three years, staff within the Lancaster School District, they have brought the cost down. They're using more of the immediate care. They're using more of their physicians instead of going to the emergency room because the emergency room is very expensive. Plus two, when you go to the emergency room, you're probably going to be there six, seven hours versus if you go to immediate care, you might get out in an hour and a half. So we talked about that. And we also talked about, maybe in the future, looking at something that's very new that others in, that participate with independent health look at where you can call doctors on the phone. Where you can call a doctor, and it's kind of like a media care, but you sit there and you FaceTime with them. So you can kind of tell them, you know, the pain's here or the pain's here, and they'll diagnose you over the phone. And that also saves time and energy because we know that a lot of our young staff, they're all into the internet and the phones and whatever's quick. So we were kind of joking around a little bit. And I said, well, just think about it. If you're driving to work, get a sick kid in the back, you can kind of FaceTime, diagnose the kid in the back, and you can still go to work. And your child can still go to school because they're okay, you know. So it's kind of, it's kind of interesting to see, because of technology, where we will be in the next century when it comes to physicians and emergency rooms and so on and so forth. But overall, I applaud the staff here for maintaining, maintaining the cost, keeping the cost down. Because when we keep the cost down, everybody benefits from it, okay? And they benefit in regards to the premiums that they have to pay overall. And every time I meet with the staff, I always say, I wish I could be in this, in this program. Because in the corporate world, anybody that's in a corporate world, you'll know that our insurance is a lot different in regards to, we pay a lot more in regards to premiums, deductions, and so on and so forth. So I'm proud to say that, you know, we moved this way three years ago, became self-funded, and we've saved a lot of money for the district and for the employees.
I just wanted to take a moment to tell everybody out there how great this school district is. Not only is the football team, you know, section-six champions, but, you know, they also had volleyball, soccer, go-to section-six championship games. The high school band performed very well in the national class. And since we're at the middle school, I wanted to let everyone know that if you saw the Addams Family or you saw the Cat in the Hat over the last couple of years, they're going to be doing Annie here in February. So I don't want anybody to miss that and see all the great things that the students of Lancaster are doing.
Well, I got a tappy on that one. The high school I saw is going to be doing Mary Poppins. Mary Poppins is my favorite musical. I love it. And I've told a few people and they're like, but how is she going to fly? I go, don't worry, she will be flying somehow, some way. So I'm really excited. I can't wait to see Mary Poppins. I love the music. And we were having fun last night as a family, singing some of the songs from the musical, you know. It was just absolutely a riot. So I'm very proud of this district. This district, we just strive in so many different ways. And, you know, I mean, if you're, if you're not able to go to the football games, we have people like Mike that has a Twitter account. He's out there telling us play-by-play. And I am so excited for the guys, too. They have done such an outstanding, and just to partay in that, and each week to move on. It's, you know that they're just so revved up, but it's their coaches, too. They believe in their coaches, they believe in their school, and they believe in what they're doing. So I hope this weekend, we kick some butt and we move on again. My husband says, if we go to Syracuse, I'm going to the Syracuse Dome. So I'm excited. Hopefully, I didn't jinx them. Let's party like it's nineteen ninety-nine, right?
Okay, and just to wrap up, since the last meeting, I attended senior night for the football team, which was quite a nice event, honoring all the senior football players and the cheerleaders and their parents. I also saw the varsity girls volleyball team compete in the sectional finals. They fell to Clarence, but a heated battle. It's always nice to see young athletes joining together as a team and competing at the highest levels. I also attended the convention. And hats off to, first, the technology presenters, Dr. Perrini, Mrs. Robyn-Zahm and Ms. Jill Santoro, who are the tech teachers on special assignment. And I agree with Mrs. Christopher that it's great that they didn't have the job description. They simply referenced the trust of Dr. Vallee and the administration and the school board to really navigate those waters. And it has resulted, and I think, in Lancaster being viewed as pioneers in the implementation of technology for students and also as a model for other districts to follow. So hats off to them. And then I also attended the leadership presentation led by Mr. Skouran and Mrs. Blatner, who are part of the uh, who are part of the Leadership Academy in both the middle school and the high school. Uh, my children, Patrick and Vanessa, have been part of the Leadership Academy and really have reaped the benefits of all the, uh, the instruction and the role modeling and really throwing those students into the fire in terms of, um, many of the events that you attend, either at the middle school or the high school, will be run by our students themselves. Um, so great presentations and it's great that we had not one, but two presentations in, uh, the school board convention. Uh, I also attended a workshop on diversity, um, which was very interesting. And I got to see the replacement speaker, uh, from, uh, who stood in for the Commissioner of Education. Uh, and he was a professor from Columbia University. And after seeing him and talking with Dr. Perini, she said, you know, usually university professors are very esoteric in their presentations. And so I went and looked up esoteric, uh, making sure I knew what it meant. Um, and she was correct. He, he was very theory-based, not as practical, uh, as we teachers and administrators realize the classroom is, but some very good ideas. So a very good convention, um, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy that some of us got to attend. Some of us didn't because of work commitments. Um, but you can review those, uh, those findings in the onboard magazine as Mrs. Christopher said. So, um, that's it. Thank you very much. Um, anything else? Okay, nine point O, superintendent's administrative report.
Uh, I have five things. Uh, Lancaster High School's been named once again as a STEM school on the move by the Western New York STEM Hub. Um, STEM Hub is an organization that recognizes exemplary work in promoting STEM initiatives in Western New York schools. Uh, it's been led by Michelle Kavanaugh and, uh, uh, just a word, uh, I hope Michelle is feeling better. Uh, she was, uh, under doctor's care, uh, but she's a, uh, an absolute, absolute, she's a former Lancaster administrator and she is a leader. And she's come back to Western New York and done wonderful things like that. So we're hoping for a speedy recovery for her. Teens cyber survey, the middle school is partnering with Siena Research Institute, thanks to Mr. Krasinski and many others, um, to participate in the teen cyber census. Uh, parents receive the consent form at the middle school open house and they chose, uh, they could choose to grant permission for their child's participation in the study or not. Uh, the purpose of the study is to be proactive in exploring students' internet habits and open a dialogue with them about appropriate behavior and safety on the internet. The data collected will assess problems, threats, effects and attitudes towards interventions as they relate to teen internet and smartphone behaviors. Um, also, um, in October, uh, I had an opportunity to meet with the National Academy Foundation, uh, who conducted a, uh, site visit at Lancaster High School. Uh, this academy assessment, uh, assists in awarding model or distinguished academy status to, uh, schools across the country. As everyone knows, I think by now, uh, Lancaster's Academy of Finance has been awarded distinguished academy since, uh, the inception of the designation and the award about approximately is seven years ago. Uh, the represent, representatives with whom I met, uh, spoke very highly of the program. And, uh, I gave, uh, all the credit to where, to the people who deserve it. And that's, uh, Mr. Dixon and the teachers and the staff and the parents who were involved in that. Uh, they do a wonderful job with that academy and, uh, make it as great as it is. Uh, also, uh, great work at Court Street. Uh, Court Street students held their annual clothing collection for the youth bureau. Bags and bags and bags of clothing were collected and will be delivered to the youth bureau by PTO parents. Um, and Court Street continues, continues to show that doing good is a good thing. And finally, sort of a unique thing, um, Mrs. Alguiero, who, uh, is a Phenom, uh, food service director, who's done great things for us the last year, um, started, um, working with the non-profit entities who were, school districts were working and encouraged by non-profit, non, not-for-profit entities, uh, to take part in the New York State Department of Agriculture's Fall Into Farm School campaign. And this effort challenged, uh, schools and their other organizations to bring locally grown, uh, produced foods to children in New York State through fun and educational activities. So, um, Mrs. Alguiero, in conjunction with, uh, building administration, teachers, uh, PTOs, et cetera, um, prepared and has been serving samples of pumpkin soup, fresh cranberry sauce, mashed cauliflower, mashed sweet potatoes, baked apples and cornbread to students during lunch periods in all of our schools. I'd like to thank Tammy and her whole staff. It was sort of a joke that they saw me in every one of the schools during, uh, when they were giving out the food, but I'll just tell you, I, I planned that. It was good. After the first one, I had to go to every single one. Uh, it was great and, uh, it was nice to see, uh, young people eating these vegetables and, uh, being taught how you could turn these things into just absolutely delicious, wonderful things. Right from the garden into the school, into people's, uh, tummies. So it was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley.
Pat, I, I forgot one thing, I'm sorry. Uh, we're also sending, uh, young ladies to states in gymnastics, swimming and cross-country.
Get them all.
Thank you, Mr. Sage.
Sure you forget.
Yeah, we'll hear about that tomorrow. Uh, ten point O, old business. Does anyone on the board have any old business they'd like to bring up? Eleven point O, new business. Eleven point one, uh, personnel items. Eleven point one point one, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes as written?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two, education items. Eleven point two point one, uh, could I have a motion to accept the committee on special educations report?
So moved.
Any, any questions or comments about that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two point two, could I have a motion to accept the committee on preschool special educations report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point O, business and financial items.
Pat, can I back you up for one minute?
Sure.
Um, I just have a, a question for the board regarding, if we go back to correspondence, um, just regarding this letter that was presented to us as a board. Um, just wanted to maybe ask the board if we thought that a policy, uh, that we could put in place would help situations that presented in this correspondence letter? And if that's something the board would like to consider, um, looking into? Um, possibly using the technology that we have, our robocall system, something that we could put in place to help in this situation? I don't believe we have something like that.
Uh, I mean, without going too specifically into the letter, um, it had to do with social media and misinformation, correct? Um, so as far as having a policy to, you know, spread information or deter the spread of information, I don't know that that would be something that we could really take on. I mean, if you'd like to put a, a proposal together and then send it along as to how you feel we should go about doing that, I guess at the next meeting, we could have discussion on that.
Wouldn't that be about the use of our robocall system, putting a policy in place about using our technology? Is that what, is that where you're getting that?
Well, I guess I'd like more clarification on what actually you would like to propose. Because the content of this letter is, uh, is, you know, again, without going into the details, it has to do with how misinformation is spread and what we are to do about that, if anything, as a district.
Isn't that part of our policy that we're, it's informational right now, fifty-six eighty-one? What's that policy, Marie?
That's the school safety plan?
No. So I don't know. I don't know that that would cover that, uh, specific instance, but.
Well, no, but it does.
Again, I guess, I mean, I guess, uh, you know, to have a good discussion about it would have to be, you know, what, what we think the issue is, if there is an issue related to this matter or similar matters. And then what is the resolution to that issue? You know, and then we can have a good discussion about whether we cover that or not already. And if not, how can we go about doing that to effectively communicate accurate information without having to answer to inaccurate information, which would be impossible to do in this day and age?
Right, if we could just consider it and just, you know, everyone kind of think, you know, think that over.
Well, again, so, you know, if you could email me something, um, articulating what, again, you think the issue is and what the resolution or the addressing of that issue could be or should be, then we could have a discussion, but it's a little bit vague right now.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, where was I now?
Twelve point one.
Very good, thank you. Um, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved. Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Uh, the next several items are for information only. Uh, so second, twelve point two is second policy reading on seventy-three thirty, searches and interrogations of students.
I have a question, Pat.
Yeah?
Um, just a question, there's, I'm, I'm trying to find it as we're looking here. Um, some re, uh, reworded language in here and it was, pardon me while I try to find it here. It had to do with female students, um, under the strip search part of it. And when, it says when possible, um, that would, of course, this is hardly ever happening, right? But let's look at, just, just let me find it here. It said whenever possible, it would be a female, um.
Where are you?
I'm try, I don't even know, I'm trying to find it. I'm, I'm right in the middle of it and it came up too quickly. But it was.
Thirty-two.
Where am I? Am I on the wrong page?
Page thirty-two? Thirty-two.
Uh, no.
Uh, I'm doing off the packet. I think you're, next page up.
Up this way?
Yes.
Keep going.
There's thirty-two.
Keep going, next one. Almost there, right there. Okay, so right in the first paragraph there where it just says, uh, whenever possible, searches will be conducted by a staff member of the same sex and the student and another staff member will be present. I'm just a little concerned about that. Is there always a female, um, staff member? I'm just looking, it just says.
What paragraph are you on? Just above the strips, strip search? Yeah, the strip search is not included in that.
Okay.
At the strip searches, first of all.
See here where I wrote that.
Is, will be, um, someone of the same sex.
Okay.
The previous paragraph is just interrogation.
Searches, okay, so even for searches, it's not the same sex. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I guess it answers that.
Okay, and very good point of clarification. Um, I mean, obviously very important. Um, and to read these things very specifically without losing your vision or falling asleep is difficult. So, no, that's, I mean, when you brought that up, I was unsure as to the specific wording. So I'm glad you clarified that and that's very important, so thank you. Twelve point three, uh, second policy reading for seventy-two twenty-two, diploma and credential options for students with disabilities. Any questions or comments on that? And twelve point four, first policy reading of fifty-four ten, purchasing. Any questions or comments on that? Twelve point five is the first policy reading for fifty-six thirty, facilities, inspection, operation and maintenance, maintenance. Um, any questions on that? Policy one, uh, first reading for fifty-six sixty, the school food service program, lunch and breakfast. Any questions, comments? Okay, twelve point seven, first pol, first reading of sixty-five fifty-one, the Family and Medical Leave Act. Uh, any questions or comments on that? Twelve point eight, first policy reading of fifty-six eighty-one, our school safety plans. Uh, any questions, comments? Twelve point nine, first policy reading of fifty-six eighty-three, fire and emergency drills, bomb threats and bus emergency drills. Any questions or comments? And then twelve point ten is the first policy reading for seventy-one thirty-one, uh, the education of homeless children and youth. Any questions? Okay, those are for information only, um, and they'll be brought up for a vote at a future meeting. Uh, twelve point eleven, uh, could I have a motion to accept the proposal for the, uh, LHS Memorial Grove?
May I ask a question about that first?
Sure.
And reading that policy, it, uh, it talks about, um, current students, teachers and so on. Can you, can you pull up? Um, and then it said something about you could fill out, uh, I don't know if it's an application, but the form. I don't know, I, I think it's, I think it's, it needs to be, I don't want to exclude anybody.
Well, what was, uh, given to the board has existed for like, I don't know exactly, it was twenty years or something. And it wasn't the whole comprehensive, uh, procedures and policy, you know, procedures that, uh, the student union and the high school go through as well as the board. Um, the reason I did, didn't put the whole thing was because this is just, um, it's sort of a symbiotic relationship where when one of these things happen, uh, they put in an application to the board and the board approves the purchase of the tree. So that's what we're talking about tonight. But certainly, um, this Friday, I will get out, uh, the whole explanation of the memorial grove and how that goes. I put a small synopsis of it because it, it was just about the tree.
So really our only concern is the purchasing of the tree.
Correct, tonight.
We don't have to decide who's.
It's already been decided by. Yeah, but, but I think it's important for me to get that, I'll get that whole to, the whole thing to you, uh, so you can read through it and how the memorial grove works.
An individual must be a member of the time is then.
Can you go back up?
One second, yeah, yeah. A senior, a student or a staff member. I'm, I'm thinking of like.
The memorial grove has always been for present students who pass away while they're students and present staff, faculty, staff, administration, whatever, if they're in service. So that particular grove and the way that it was started and, um, and conceptualized by, you know, Mr. Talinda years and years ago and the Board of Education and the president of the su, the then superintendent, I think, Dr. Drearty, was it was just for in-service members. But I will get the whole thing to the Board of Education this Friday.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twelve, could I have a motion to accept the consideration of, uh, the litigation settlement as detailed?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twelve point thirteen, uh, could I have a motion to accept the capital project change orders?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? We do have Mr. Armani here to answer questions. Hello, Jill. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fourteen, could I have a motion to accept the surplus equipment report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fifteen is, could I have a motion to accept the auction results?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point sixteen, could I have a motion to accept a, a contract between Erie One Boses and the district?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments about that contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Uh, twelve seventeen, could I have a motion to accept, uh, a contract between Aspire of New, Western New York and the school district?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Thirteen point O is our public hearing. Um, we don't have any speakers signed up for this evening. Fourteen point O, future presentations on December fifth. Uh, we'll have the genius hour with, uh, Mrs. Robyn Zahn and the Academy of Finance Business Advisory Board and Community Partnership with, uh, Mr. Scott Dixon. Uh, with that, fifteen point O, we'll go into, or could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And with that, um, we won't be returning, um, so this effectively ends the meeting. Um, our next meeting is December fifth, two thousand sixteen, at Como Park Elementary School at seven PM. Uh, thank you for coming, everyone. Thank you for coming, everyone.